Good evening, welcome to the Select Board meeting of the Town of Bennington on Monday, November 25th, 2019. We're at the Bennington Fire Facility. And my name is Donald Campbell, I'm the Chair of this Board, and I would like to ask everybody else to please introduce themselves. Why don't we, since she almost has her mic, why don't we start with Nancy?
Nancy Lively.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Hello, Jeanne Jenkins.
Good evening, Jim Carroll.
Bruce Lee Clark.
And I'm Jean Connor.
And I'm Stu Hurd, Town Manager.
So, we have an interesting agenda tonight, but what I would like to do first is to, as is our tradition, do the Pledge of Allegiance. And Bruce, would you please lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is the Consent Agenda. This consists of the minutes of our meeting of October 11th, 2019, and the warrants as circulated. If you have not had a chance to bring any questions to Stuart already about these warrants, this is the time to do it. So, do I have a motion on the Consent Agenda for the purposes of discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion about the Consent Agenda? Couple of us have gotten corrections to Nancy Lively. I think the only piece that I want to, the only correction I want to mention is that Bill Scully was absent at the last meeting. He had had some conversations with Bruce Lee Clark, which we're very glad about, but the original minutes indicated that he voted, which he did not really do. You expressed that he had in person offered some support.
That's correct.
That's different from having him on the phone or in some other room. So, that wasn't a formal vote, but we've taken care of that in minutes. Okay, unless there are any other items of conversation, I would say, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes and warrants. The next item on our agenda is Citizens Comment. So, Citizens Comment, as everybody knows by now, is a time for people to discuss things that are not on our agenda, and for you to let us know what's on your mind. We would ask you to refrain from any personal attacks, and to keep your comments to under three minutes, please. And the first person on our list, I can read that, Sam Rustino, come on up, please, Sam.
Good evening, Select Board members, and happy Thanksgiving. My topic for tonight is, there's been some discussion around town about the storage of propane tanks on rail lines surrounding Bennington. This has been talked about before, back in 2015. Our fire officials have been trained with local other officials around Bennington, between North Bennington and Shasberry, and other agencies, along with Vermont Railway. There shouldn't be a problem with that. For those of you that are at home, most of you here know of the situation, but there are other issues that need to be addressed as well. We do have compressed natural gas that goes through our town, and that's at the hospital. Are you aware of the route that it takes? Does it go actually through Bennington? Compressed natural gas should be a matter as well. We have compressed natural gas at Energizer, probably will no longer be there once Energizer shuts down, but I know of one facility at the southwest of Vermont Medical Center, they do have compressed natural gas. Also, what about people that have oxygen tanks in their homes? There should be a placard out there to let fire officials know, in the event of a fire, that there's oxygen tanks out there. Those are the areas that need to be watched a lot. We also have propane tanks over by Tenny Brook, and also at the bottom of Harwood Hill, which is Sinergy. Those are the issues that need to be addressed, not by the railway. And Bruce Lee Clark, I had a brief conversation with him at Home Depot, and we came to a conclusion of the definition of in-transit, even though it's not clear with our local government. You know, it's ironic how our local government defines, actually, our national government defines in-transit. So, it's something to be addressed, and how this Board feels about it, but it's been a topic on and off through social media, and I just want to know how the Board feels about it.
Thank you, Sam. We'll be bringing that topic up during the Manager's Report. I know that Stuart has been active on that. The next Citizens Comment is James Salerno. If this mic is working, James, why don't you come right to this mic here, please? Is that one on, Mike? Yep, okay.
Hello?
Great, thank you very much.
Hi, thanks all for letting me come up here and speak tonight. I'm representing, not a business interest for a change, I'm representing a group called BAM. BAM is the Bennington Area Makers. So, we're trying to get a makerspace going. We are getting a makerspace going here in Bennington. What's a makerspace? Well, it's an accessible, open, and safe space for the community to explore science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics skills, and to support entrepreneurship by making things and by making connections. So, we've run some programming already. We did a Halloween costume workshop, and more recently, we're doing a holiday lantern workshop. We've had two holiday lantern workshops so far, last Tuesday and last Saturday, over 40 people attended. We have another one tomorrow, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at 239 Main Street. Basically, we're using reclaimed tin cans filled with ice, and we punch holes in them with hammers and nails, using templates, or freehanding it, you know, or using a marker, whatever is your preference. Once the designs are complete, you melt the ice out, you put an LED votive in it, and that gets me on to the next thing, which is the tree lighting celebration and parade at the Veterans Home. All of this is to, you know, do something nice for the community, get people out there, and then do something nice for the Veterans Home. The Bennington Regional Chamber, Vermont Vets Home, the Town of Bennington, Better Bennington Corporation, they're hosting a lantern walk, a community tree lighting, choirs, caroling, local and regional dignitaries, visit from a special somebody, who you can probably guess who it may be, and candlelit walk through the Deer Park, and then an opening house at the Chamber. The lantern walk is going to be December 4th?
Fourth.
Fourth. We're going to start at BAM, 239 Main Street, 4:30 p.m. We're going to gather our lanterns and our little red wagons. We're going to head down Main Street. We're going to stop for some caroling at the newly completed Pocket Park, and we're going to make our way up North Street to the Vets Home. The tree lighting proper is going to start at 5:30, stroll through the Deer Park after that, and then head over to the Chamber for some hot cocoa and snacks. Future programming for BAM is going to be a junk jam in December, where we take apart old and broken appliances, toys, that kind of thing, learn what makes them work, and build a stockpile of things like motors and screws and gears for later projects. Then we're having a kids' Lego robotics program for January. If you're interested to know more about BAM, we have community meetings every Thursday, 6:00 p.m. to 239 Main Street. You can check out Bennington Area Makers on Facebook. Our website is still in progress, but that will very soon be at bamvt.com. Thanks you all for your time.
That's great, thank you very much.
Can you just, instead of the number 239, what building is it?
Oof.
Or like where?
The Flans.
What?
The Flans, the Pharaoh, Hogan, Eddington.
Gotcha, okay.
When will I get y'all to call it something else, soon?
Across from the Fish Fry.
Yeah, across from the Fish Fry. I like that better, even.
Salernos.
Okay.
Next to Sunnyside Diner. I like the ladies over at Sunnyside. We can call it that for now.
Great.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much, thank you. Kevin Hoyt.
Good evening. Good evening, nice to have you, let me talk here. I guess I'm here representing the people of Bennington and the citizens of Vermont. I'm a citizen of Bennington myself, born and raised, and I've made quite a few discoveries, I'd say, over the last year, but most recently, some concerns I want to address with the town loan program to start with. I think there's a lot of funny things, a lot of line items that are adding up. Specifically, the town loan program itself, I think it's, it was scheduled for a three-year term, maximum of $35,000. The one I'm looking at specifically is the Bennington redevelopment, and I'd like to know who was on the Bennington redevelopment. And for some reason, there's $350,000 loan that was given by the Town of Bennington to the Bennington redevelopment, and it almost sounds like the town paying themselves. The loan program in general, I'm not quite sure. I've asked Stuart questions on this, and basically, he told me it was none of our business. They don't have to tell me where the money came from, or who got paid. My assumption here, I think, is it was part of a $1.5 million pass-through grant from the Governor for the redevelopment of the Putnam Block. Why our investors for that project would take a loan from the town is unbelievable. The terms also for that loan, I don't think they have to start payback for 10 years. Again, this is supposed to be a three-year limit. And again, other comparisons, we're going after, I don't want to mention any names, I know one person missed a couple months payment, and again, they were instantly sued, but we have other, you know, I guess, high-profile people. I don't care about names. Kaia Morris is, well, I believe, 16 months late, and no one will even address that.
So, let's not make this personal, please.
I'm not trying to make it personal, but again, that's one example of, again, I think it's the people involved that are the problem. So, that's one issue. The other issue is massive election fraud. I looked in, I voted, actually, in November. I've got a picture of myself casting that ballot, and I was one of, I don't know what our list is up to, 20 or 30 people, all coincidentally Republican votes that were tossed. More unfortunate, I found a list of people who didn't vote, but somebody voted for them. We've got a list of fake names, we've got a list of fake addresses. The number of out-of-state voters in the college sway is completely unbelievable. I'm here to tell everybody watching, and you guys, that I don't think our vote counted in Bennington. It got me and my girlfriend voting for the last four years on town elections, and we did not do that. Again, the number of elderly people that voted is simply incredible. So, I don't know what to do. The problem here is we have nobody watching the watchers. There's nobody to prosecute the prosecutors. I believe I've got evidence against 11 high-ranking state officials, and probably a half dozen local officials, but I have no one to go to, because my prosecutor, state prosecutor's also involved, the Attorney General's also involved. So, what I'm asking from the town, I guess, is, I don't know, maybe we pick an arbitrary amount, like $66,000, and audit and investigate the town for our own spending and elections for, let's say, the last two or three years. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And thank you, Board, for refraining from trying to respond to those comments, as we don't during Citizens Comment. So, the next item on our agenda is a topic that we've been looking forward to for a while, which is the Bennington Marketing Economic Development topic. And this is a big topic. We scheduled it at this time during the year, because we're moving into the budget season, and as everybody knows, we began making a sort of investment in marketing last year, and I think it's important for us to realize where that, a little bit, where that fits in the bigger picture as we come into budget season. So, with that very light introduction, I guess I would introduce Shannon Barsadi, and ask her if she would walk us through this, please.
Sure.
Thank you, Shannon.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So, I'm Shannon Barsadi, Community Development Director for the Town of Bennington. And as I started talking with Stu, and Dan, and the Select Board about this marketing campaign, I said, "Let's put it in the context of all the other marketing that's happening for Bennington and our region." And so, I invited a few other presenters here as well. So, we have John Shanahan here from the Better Bennington Corporation, Matt Harrington from the Bennington Area Chamber of Commerce, and Jonathan Cooper from the Bennington County Regional Commission. And so, we're going to look at how we're all doing different distinct projects, but how they also work together to market our region. So, I'm going to start with John.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing us to be here tonight. As Shannon said, and I think the reason Shannon had me go first, is the area that we represent is the smallest and the most focused, and our marketing budget is very limited, so most of the marketing efforts that we take are physical and hands-on, more than it is in print advertising or online marketing. But we, since we don't market or promote ourselves, we're all, we're marketing or promoting other businesses or downtown, we go after two avenues of marketing. One for tourism, shopping and retail, and the other is for business recruitment, to help our property owners fill their properties. The business recruitment, I put in front of you two packets, one tucked inside of the other, but you do have a copy of our recruitment packet that we use and spend quite a deal of time utilizing this, and we don't put it out there widely, but what we do is we target a specific property, discuss businesses, or having a relocated business for that property, and mail this out to them, and then follow it up, and then have meetings with them. So, it's very targeted, and that way, we can take the little funds we have and reach out to those exactly that we're hoping to attract.
John, excuse me, this is the red piece you're saying you mailed?
Nope, this piece right here.
This one?
Yeah. Inside the red, before I go any further, to the right-hand side, an outline of what I'll be talking about. As far as tourism goes, we also break that down into three markets. Again, when we promote downtown, we promote our specific members and businesses, but when it comes to tourism, we also promote the entire Town of Bennington. So, we link a lot of people either to the Chamber site, or to the Vermont Begins Here site, to the Silvermont site, which everybody will be talking about. Depending on what specifically they might have landed on our page for, we make sure they go right to the source instead of sitting on our page. But tourism, we break that down to locals, to reintroduce them back to the shops downtown and get them onto the street, to tourists, which we specifically market to the Albany District, which is kind of the low-hanging fruit, and then down to the Berkshires, where we know we get a lot of tourists from. The locals, we don't do a lot of local advertising for ourself in the local newspaper. What we do is we underwrite advertising for our members. And thanks to the Bennington banner, we give them a certain amount of money. Whoever advertises for a certain event, we pay a portion of individual's ads to help promote that event. And by doing that, instead of us getting a little ad, we'll end up getting a full page, which came out yesterday for Small Business Saturday, as an example. Everybody makes their advertising more affordable. The banner allows me quite a bit of space in the middle to provide content, so everybody gets a bigger bang for their buck. And it lets us take $200 or $300 and really put out a $4,000 ad with the help of everybody else. So, we're very focused on the way we do our advertising and our marketing. Downtown, we look at downtown, it's our product that we're trying to sell. So, when we look at some of our efforts that we do, we look at it as merchandising our product. For an example, the holiday decorations that went up today with the help of the Town of Bennington.
They look great, by the way.
And they do, they're beautiful. It's a big investment, a lot of work, but a huge impact, and it brings people downtown, so it is a marketing effort. Even though it doesn't fall under our marketing line when we submit our budget, it's Jeanne was helping me going through our budget line. We're like, "That's marketing, that's marketing, everything is marketing." And Chad, thank you, and the football team also, for the help.
It was a lot of fun.
And I wanted to get that up before I forgot. Events and activities. Our events and activities are out-free downtown, so it's, our incentive isn't to host activities to make money, but we know it brings people back down, puts people on the street. We try to line them up with all the slowest periods. They all cost us money, except for one of them, but we know it puts people into those stores. So, all of our expenses in hosting our events is also a marketing line. Social media, when we pay for it, we do, like we do with our other sites, we spend our money outside of Bennington. Locally, we can read the newspaper, talk to each other, discuss things on social media, but when we pay for our advertising and marketing, we do it outside of the area. What I think we do best is we look for free marketing opportunities. For example, the State of Vermont, VermontVacation.com, we get to have a listing for the Town of Bennington and downtown. All of our events can be posted for free. They provide us the analytics on what kind of hits we get, plus the information of the person reaching out. So, a lot of our marketing work is more labor than it is dollars, because we don't have them, but it's very specific, and that's how we track it through our Board of Directors. And together with the other marketing efforts in town, that's our role, and it seems to work well. But it's nice that we have a pretty cohesive team. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Why don't we bring you up after we've heard from everybody for questions?
Sure.
Bring everybody up for questions afterwards. Thank you very much.
All right, so, as you can see from the packet that John passed out, this phrase, you know, this brand of Bennington, Vermont Begins Here, is something that we're both using, so he's also using that. And part of that is because there's some history here that Vermont Begins Here really started as a town-wide marketing campaign a few years ago, under Michael Harrington, when he was in this role. And it was originally started with the USCA Rural Development Grant. So, one of the things that's changed is we have a new logo design that really brings the Bennington more into focus than the original logo did, and we thought that was important, and that's thanks to Maru, who's here somewhere. Maru Dayan made that for us. So, some of the goals of this campaign are to really brand Bennington as a tourism destination. And this particular campaign really is moving from more of an economic development focus to a tourism visitor site, and it's including Bennington more prominently in the messaging and graphics, and investing in more creative content, like really high-quality photography, blog writing, you know, travel writing for, as Bennington is a destination. And the primary audience is for visitors within this New England travel market. So, as John said, you know, looking particularly close to our neighbors, so Albany, Berkshires, the State of Vermont, down to, we are doing some Facebook-targeted ads towards the New York City area as well. And really thinking about reasons to come to Bennington, right? Reasons to spend a weekend in Bennington. So, when we're promoting events, we're really looking at it with that lens. The secondary audience, of course, is locals. I've learned a lot about Bennington just by being part of this. I mean, there's just so much. If someone says there's nothing going on in Bennington, I beg to differ. So, it's definitely for locals as well, and for visitors, there's always the hope that people who come to visit here might want to move here, or start a business here. So, there are also resources available on the site for that. And this is one of the landing pages, Bennington, Vermont Begins Here. When you go to the site, I wanted to do this live, but I wasn't sure about the internet quality of this here at the firehouse, so I just took some screenshots. But it's really heavy with the photography, because that's what people want to see, is they want to see the images of Bennington. And so, it also, really, the heart of the site is the Things to Do page. So, that includes recreation, cultural attractions, events, rainy day activities, shopping, et cetera. And then there's also a great directory of restaurants, hotels. One of the things that we found when we started this process was some of the market research is showing that people are really looking at our area as a wedding destination. So, there's also a whole page on wedding venues, wedding vendors, et cetera, move-to-Vermont resources, and then necessities, which are, you know, medical needs, you know, grocery, transportation, et cetera. And then a blog. So, this is an example of one of the pages of cultural activities. So, it's just got some great photos of some of our gems here, the Robert Frost Stone House Museum, the Old First Church, and the Park McCullough House, with some snapshots about them, and then a link to their website. And this is a shot from the recreation page. So, this is an area that I feel like it's one of the best resources that I've seen for recreation that we have, and it can also be so much better. So, we started with BRCRC has a great trail map, we included that, and then a lot of more description of the various trails that we have, and links to those trail maps and websites as well. And then shopping, this description right here of featured listings is a way for, also for the site to generate revenue. So, these are paid listings that local businesses can do to boost their particular business, and have a featured listing. Restaurants, I think these photos are just fantastic. And then hotels, which are categorized as hotels, motels, B&amp;Bs, and then there's also a listing of nearby campgrounds. Vermont weddings, venues, all the different vendors for weddings that we have in our area. And I think another heart of this site is the blog, and we're really lucky to have Tara Schatz, who has a blog called Backroad Ramblers, and she's a Bennington local, so she really loves Bennington, but she also has a lot of expertise in travel writing. So, she's been doing our blogs. And she also started a monthly email newsletter. So, this is going out with, you know, the highlighted events for the month ahead, also itineraries, blog posts, that kind of dig a little deeper into the different attractions in Bennington. You can't make this out that well, but another highlight is just the great photography that's on Instagram, and how many people are using that. We already have a number of Instagram followers. We're really trying to get this out on a, you know, regular basis, really beautiful images of Bennington. And Facebook. And this little snippet here shows one of the blogs, Discover Old Bennington on a Self-Driven Walking Tour, that Tara wrote, and that 2,500 or so people have reached, have been reached through this and have shared it, and are engaging with it. So, that was one of the most popular. And this is an example of a Facebook ad. We're working with 802 Marketing, and they helped put together the site. They also are doing the digital marketing management right now. We're spending a lot of our marketing dollars on online advertising to really get this out there. So, we're doing that through Facebook ads and through Google ads. This particular ad, it's just, it's a little creepy how targeted Facebook can be, but they're really good at, you know, finding a particular market. So, this ad, it says just three hours from New York City, is focused on, you know, people aged 25 to 65 who live within the 50 square miles of New York City. So, some snapshots from the website. The revamped Vermont Begins Here site has over 6,500 visits since it launched on September 1st. Two-thirds of those visits, 4,300, originated with the Google Paid Ads campaign. So, Google Paid Ads, it's like you're paying for search words. So, for example, when someone puts in "Things to Do in Bennington," your site's up higher on the list because you've paid for that position. So, we're paying for words like "Things to Do in Bennington," "Bennington Attractions," "Old Bennington," sites, et cetera. And that campaign, the Google Ad Campaign, just began in October, but it's already driving a lot of people to the site. So, we have 443 followers on Facebook, and 727 followers on Instagram. A little over 200 people have signed up for the monthly newsletter that launched in October. And I think this part's really interesting to see who, what people are going to, and what they're really clicking through. So, Things to Do, Cultural Attractions, number one, these are the top 10 things. Also, the Fall Hiking in Bennington was something that people really were interested in, shared a lot, maybe because they hadn't seen a lot of descriptions of fall hiking before. Also, the Old Bennington Walking Tour was very popular, Bennington Hotels, Things to Do in Bennington this Fall, Small Business Saturday, and Fall of Palooza, both events done by the Better Bennington Corporation, the Bennington Restaurants, and also the Restaurant Week was a popular thing that the Chamber puts on in November, and then events such as the Food Truck Festival and Outdoor Recreation. So, those were all of the top sites that people looked at and clicked through. So, those were all of the top sites that people looked at and clicked through. And I think that the reason that we, what we're really trying to do is boost all of our efforts together by collaborating. I mean, this site really would not have happened without so much collaboration and volunteer effort on the part of the marketing committee that came together to do this. So, you know, Lynn Green from the Four Chimneys, Eric Peterson from Old Castle, Maru Dayan from the Country Club, and Sheila Harden from Bennington Potters were prominent business leaders who came together and presented to you and said, "We need to be doing this." And so, they've been instrumental in making this happen, and donating so much time and beautiful photography to it. But, we also work regularly with the Better Bennington Corporation, and the Chamber, and BRCRC, so we're all working together. We link to each other's events. Our blog posts highlight the Chamber and BBC members. We link to the Chamber calendar. The Move to Vermont landing page features all of the economic development resources from these different organizations. And there's some great videos from the original Vermont Begins Here campaign that are also on that, that really kind of get into more conversations with local business owners, and why they've decided to do business here in Bennington. And we also have featured listing options for local businesses to, it gives them a platform to do more marketing, so that they have a larger reach. We also have rack cards that we are placing at local businesses, and then free listings for all of our cultural institutions, our farms, and our recreation sites. So, that's some examples of the collaborations. There's probably more that I don't love. And our next steps, because this is a new site, we're really going to focus on online advertising through the Google and Facebook ads that I mentioned, and use the resource of 802 Marketing to measure the effectiveness of those ads. Really, the hope is that over time, as we have more rich content on our site, that organic searches are going to replace the big searches. But, that takes time. So, that, and then, when we have less money that we're spending with the online advertising, we can put that into other forms of print media, other kinds of advertising as well. So, we're also focusing on building up that creative catalog of photographs and creative writing, because most of the content that we have on the site so far has been donated. So, we really want to not rely on, "Hey, do you have a picture of this?" We're looking strategically at, okay, where are the gaps in our photography and in our writing? What are the areas that we know people are looking at? And how can we really dig deeper and create content? So, that's what we're going to be focusing on over the next year. And including more print media, a lot of these are still kind of wish list items, but we do have print media right now in Up Country Magazine, which is working across, you know, the Berkshires and Southern Vermont. We'd like to be able to put more into these other ones that I mentioned here, the Vermont Vacation Guide, Stratton and Manchester Magazine, the Berkshires Guide, Vermont Magazine. And there's also radio, there's TV, there's a lot of things that could, would be great, you know, if there was more of plenty available. And we'd like to increase revenue by featuring local businesses as well, and promoting more signups through the monthly newsletter. So, those are our next steps. A lot of them are happening now. But, I do think it's important to remember that, you know, collaboration is key, and also sharing what we have is key, because we don't have a marketing staff, we don't have a sales force. So, really, all of you who are here, and everybody who's watching, share this, you know, share the website, share the social media posts, you know, there's a lot to be proud of in Bennington, so. There's a, you sign up right on the site, if you go to the bottom of the Vermont Begins Here site. Yeah. So, you need to.
No, I did, I just wanted to be sure. If I did, I would be sorry.
Oh, yes, you just go to, go to the, it's vermontbeginshere.com, and at the bottom of the site. Sorry, it's not live, but it's not easy, it's not hard to do.
Shannon, thank you for that. We'll have some questions for you, I'm sure, when we get to the end. Who else have you got with us tonight, anyone?
Not here.
All right. Thank you for being with us tonight, Mr. Harrington.
Good evening to some older faces and some new faces since I've last presented before the Select Board. You know, I'm going to come to this board with two hats, one being the Chair of the Governor's Travel and Recreation Council, so I kind of want to give you some broader data and information based on the state of Vermont, and then, from the Chamber's regional perspective. I think I've emailed everybody a little bit of my overview. I'm not going to go through all of that. I want to kind of view it as buckets of elements that we're working on in conjunction with Shannon, John, and Jonathan. But, Vermont Chamber recently put this out, I thought it would be interesting to kind of read, and put us in the right mindset when it comes to tourism. Quote, "Tourism is significant economic driver for Vermont. As tourists visit our communities, it enables us to encourage them to live and work here. Increased funding will help bolster the Vermont brand and ensure the Vermont iconic experience are amplified through the Vermont Department of Tourism and Marketing, out-of-state destination marketing." And I would argue the same is true for Bennington. With strong support, this industry can thrive maintaining our preeminence as a world-class destination. Some information for us, this just came out from Tourism, as well as we gear up for Tourism Day in January. Thirty-two thousand, 204 jobs are created in the tourism industry, accounts for about 10% of our Vermont workforce. Three-hundred-and-ninety-one million dollars are generated in tax revenue, I'm sure Bennington lends to some of that as well. About $1,450 is the tax revenue generated that contributes to tax savings for every Vermont household, because sales tax, alcohol tax, those things go back into helping raise both town, communities, regional, and state efforts. And the visits to Vermont in 2018 spent over $2.8 billion, and again, I would argue that Bennington was part of that as well. So, with that in mind, let me talk a little bit. First, I think I come as a Chamber of Commerce that used to be, you know, really focused on Bennington. I've presented before this board before, that we're moving more to a regional effort. I think that can still be collaborative in the same, in the same way, but I come as an advocate for Bennington marketing. As we see Discover panel, as we see Manchester Business Association, as we see even a Dorset Chamber or Arlington Area Renewal Project, be investing in their communities equally, I think Bennington needs to be investing in its communities, and we're happy to kind of be a partner in that as well, as we have been with those other communities. So, view as a bucket, some of the elements that we've been working on, again, I don't have a pretty presentation, so, bennington.com, since I presented to you in the beginning, has been visited by 2017 standards, from 2017 up to today, 190,000 times, 62,000 times in 2019 alone, about 900,000 page views, so we're just short of that million page views since 2017. I was talking to Shannon before this, I think it's very important to put into context that I think bennington.com was brought in 1994, and Vermont Begins Here, of which my brother, myself, and others started, was purchased only a couple of years ago, and it really hasn't gotten the gasoline that it needed until Shannon and John and others stepped up. So, view that in the context of 20 years ago, we started something. In 2017, we rebuilt our website, and so, only since then have we seen these gains, but it really is on the backs of the people that purchased bennington.com a long, long time ago. Our bounce rate, for those that don't understand bounce rate from the website, if somebody comes to your website and they see one page and they get the heck out of there, that's your bounce rate. Hopefully, we're hoping that people get in love with your website, and so they dig into your website, you get to the homepage, you click on something else, that's better than that. So, our bounce rate is very, very low. Interesting, I mean, it's just fascinating, when I was pulling up numbers for Shannon, you know, we have a bounce rate of 1.3%. The industry average, the industry excellence average is 26%. So, we're doing something very, very well on the bennington.com website, which is getting people to dig in. Our most famous homepage, or most famous pages visited, is our homepage, 217,000 visits since January 2017. Garlic Fest, which is, of course, a Bennington brand, of course, was visited 154,000 times since 2017, 55,000 times in 2019 alone. Restaurant Week, which was brought up, and I found this fascinating, usually it doesn't rise to the top, but as I was pulling numbers, our current Restaurant Week page got 17,000 views since 2017, and 13,000 in 2019 alone. So, a lot of this year's Restaurant Week and rekindling of that brand brought in, you know, over 50% of our overall visit. And then, our community calendar, which Shannon mentioned, had 35,000 views since 2017, 10,000 views in 2019 alone. So, good growth there, it's a very engaging page. We encourage all our members, and even if you're not a member, I'll work a deal with you, to post on that. That community calendar is only as powerful as the events that it has going on. I won't spend too much on social media, we have a pretty strong Facebook presence. We also manage the Chamber page and the Shire Young Professional page. Our Explore the Shires Facebook page is powerful as well. We're really focusing on Shire's, a Vermont Instagram handle. We've invested a lot of money into that this past year, and we grew from 3,000 followers to 5,000 followers, which is about 150% growth for us, we're very excited about that. Many of you have seen our video shows, whether it's Explore the Shires, or maybe Shirenomics. We use a partnership with Cat TV and GNAT to provide them the access to have that content, so we don't really get a whole lot of credit from that in terms of SEO, but we're happy to support Cat TV and GNAT by providing content. We had social influencers here this year, mainly Allison Tibaldi, visited in November, she was a food influencer, we brought her here from the state of Vermont. She visited Pangaea in North Bennington. Perhaps more exciting, Lynn was helping with this, the Yellow Note came here, which is a social influencer that Lynn Green uses a lot. They provide a four-hour workshop for all our local businesses on Instagram for business. So, not only are we trying to do it for Bennington, trying to do it for the region, we're trying to teach a lot of our business members how to do it for themselves. Some other things that people may not know, the rack card distribution system, so if you go to Madison's, the BBC North Shore Bookstore, there's those beautiful wooden racks there. The Chamber manages those through our Rack Distribution Center and System, we have about 20 racks out there. And what that is crucial for is that we wanted to create a new rack system that wasn't promoting the rest of Vermont. Don't go up to the Alchemist, don't go up to Stowe, we want you to stay in Bennington, and we want you to stay in the region. So, here are a lot of our local rack, local rack cards, whether it's Madison's, whether it's Hawkins House, we want to promote you staying in the area, so we've been crucial in that. We manage the State Welcome Center up on 279, we saw 130,000 visitors go through that, and that is calculated based on a system, an electronic system, that tracks people coming in the door, and then subtracts the people coming out of the door, so it's pretty well-meaning. So, 130,000, that's about 13% growth for us in the last year. We put out a tourism e-newsletter to about 10,000 people every single month, it has about a 30% average open rate, and about a 10% click rate. Again, not to confuse too many people with marketing jargon, but that's very well above average, so we're very excited. I think one of the best things about selling Bennington and selling the region, when you actually sell it, it's pretty easy. It's not hard to convince people to come to visit the monument, it's not hard to convince people to come visit Cattle Bridges. I was just out in California a week ago, and as much as California is beautiful and different, and the desert was something I'd never seen before, coming to Vermont, you have to imagine that all those people coming to Vermont had never experienced anything like this. We have unfettered landscape, and so that's very exciting for people. We put out the Visitors Guide every single year, we created about 60,000 this year, we keep about 30,000 right here locally, and then we put 4,000 into Boston, 5,000 of those go into Interstate 84 and 91, 12,000 go into other Vermont towns and welcome centers, and 10,000 go into Lake George, Capital Region, Saratoga, and Hudson Valley. We traveled, we went to a couple of travel shows this year, I won't go into a complete amount of those. Really, I mean, one of the key signatures of this Chamber, and we have a lot of these here locally in Bennington, we hope to expand into the region, but our events are world-class, our events are well-known throughout Vermont. Of course, the Garlic Fest, we saw 16,000, record-breaking this year, and it was recognized as a time-honored event, which means we've received 10 to 10, 10 back-to-back awards for top 10 fall events. So, no longer do we have to apply for that award, but also, that Garlic Fest is among the few that have ever been honored as kind of a time-honored event. We started up the Wings of Winter Home Brew a couple of years ago, we see about 400 come up to that. When we were looking at the Summer Home Brew in terms of County Street, the producers wanted to move away from that, so we partnered with them. We had it at the 802 Restrooms Facility, the new facility up on Shields Drive, for about 500 people. We did Restaurant Week, amazing feedback this fall, Restaurant Week, and you know, the spring was fine, but fall is something that we've heard just knocked it out of the park. We've had a couple restaurants say it was some of their best Wednesdays and Thursdays they've experienced since being in business, which is exactly what we want to hear. We continue to partner with the craft producers for Bennington Arts Weekend, we partner with the BBC to host a Welcome to Bennington Vendor Reception, which we're always happy to partner with the BBC to do. And then, finally, coming up, we have our Home for the Holidays, which kind of culminates or start off with the tree lighting at the Vets' Home, the Lantern Walk that Shannon's been helping us with, and John, and then culminating into what we're kind of calling a cookie-making factory at the Chamber this year. So, we're happy to partner with Hanaford, they donate all the cookies, and all the sprinkles, and all the frosting. We had probably 300 children go through my office, yes, last year, and create cookies, and sprinkle, sprinkle color over the place. So, we're excited to do that. I'm not going to go over too much more, you know, I think the punchline for us, especially for the Select Board, on the back of your sheet, we have our financial cost. That's something as a Chamber, as a private nonprofit, membership-based thing, we don't have to share. We choose to share that with you, to let you know how much marketing costs in 2019. Again, I won't go through all the numbers.
Excuse me, I just forwarded that email this morning.
Okay. Do you want me to walk through a little bit of it?
It went to a address that we no longer use, a group address for the Select Board. I just got it and forwarded it to them this morning, most of these guys.
So, let me just, if it's okay, I'll walk one minute through, I'll do it real quick. I've mentioned a lot of the initiatives, I think it's important to put a dollar amount behind them, so you understand, A, what this Chamber is always willing to go for, and in support of Bennington, and also, where you might put that in alignment with the request for next year for Bennington-specific marketing. The Visitor Guide costs us about $46,000 to produce. We do raise funds through advertising, but, you know, all in all, when you talk about creation, printing, and distribution, it's about $46,000. Our social media management for our Facebook and Instagram is about $15,000 a year. Our e-newsletter management, which is creating those newsletters and putting them out, is about $3,000. Our community calendar is actually the cheapest, it's about $100, so if you want to get onto that. You know, we still have to pay staff to read every single post that somebody puts on that community calendar and approve, so you could add in some staff time to that, but it's about, you know, $10, $12 a month to have that widget on our system. Our website management, and I would say this is quite low this year, if we were to rebrand as a regional Chamber, or work on our Shires page, but right now, it's about $4,000 in website management. Social media campaign ads, we only spent about $1,500 this year on Facebook and Instagram. As a person, if you know me, you know that my hearts, or my, you know, my hope is that we spend more on social media, but that's quite low even for me. Followers, we paid two photographers $1,500. Video, we paid two photographers $1,000, and I was specific to our events, we did a Winter Home Brew video, and we did a Garlic Fest video. If we were to expand that to have a regional tourism video, that'd be a lot more. Garlic Fest print campaign, so all the money we pour into everything from Stratton, and the locals, all the way out to Connecticut and New York, we spent about $15,000 in Garlic Fest print. The Chamber print campaign, which is a little bit more around our Restaurant Week and some of our lower hanging events, is about $5,000. Travel shows, we spent about $6,000 in order to travel, attend, promote, and staff those. So, if you were to equal those all together, and again, please read the email, if you have questions, email me, I'm happy, you know, I'm a source here, is about $100,000. I was actually very surprised to see that, you know, if you look at my Chamber budget, it probably says something like $19,000, but if you were to add in Garlic Fest, and if you were to add in the Visitors Guide, and if you were to add in some of the things that we've kind of broken apart from our marketing budget, but they're still freelancers and things like that. budget, but they're still freelancers and things like that, when we add all those up, it's about $100,000. And so, I guess I would finish by saying, you know, I'm an advocate for the Bennington brand. As we see that this Chamber morphs from a Bennington brand, and I've had this conversation with many of you before, as we morph away from that to support the Shires of Vermont brand, I was very, very excited, and I'm very, very thankful for what you did last year by giving the 50,000, because it meant Vermont Begins Here could live on it. It meant that there was still some healthy competition between Williamstown, Rutland, even Manchester. And so, I'm a big supporter of this. If I can be of any help, whether it comes to marketing or just even sharing resources, Shannon, John, and others know that I'm available. So, thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. Well, have you got Shannon? Ah, there he comes.
Bear with me for a moment while I bring up our brief slideshow. And by brief, I mean brief.
Would you introduce yourself, please? I know, we know who you are, but maybe not everybody knows your smiling face by now.
Here we go. I came equipped with that information. So, my name is Jonathan Cooper. I am the Community and Economic Development Specialist at the Bennington County Regional Commission, a position I've had for about three years and change now. And I'm here to talk about Silvermont, a website and a campaign of its own that's really meant to be a top-level summary here, an asset to our employers in the process of business and workforce recruitment. Recruitment without retention means that you've lost time and money in bringing people and then losing them again, but we see that in all of our industries, at all levels, entry level to executive level, we are, our employers are looking farther and farther afield for the talent that they need to take advantage of the opportunities that they have. Silvermont, the brand sort of came out of the response to Tropical Storm Irene and a cooperation between the two counties where the areas were so heavily affected, Wyndham County and Bennington County. That brand, Silvermont, then was developed through some market research and sort of sat on the shelf for a number of years, looking for some financing to kind of activate it. We received a grant from $40,000 from the USDA last year, but not before we could demonstrate some local buy-in from businesses and other organizations in the form of cash, in the form of in-kind contributions, and I'll explain more about that as we get there. But to begin with, or to reiterate, the audience in some ways, the user base, is our employers. The intended target, then, are their potential recruits. So, we want them thinking, those individuals, as they sit down, they think all over the nine-to-five offer from the company, we want to have them thinking about the five-to-nine that comes after that. So, what are you doing after work? You want to take advantage of the things that make this a special place to live, and by this, I mean Wyndham and Bennington Counties. So, I'm the largest of the Russian nesting dolls that we're talking through tonight. So, the mega matryoshka, and I'll wear that with pride. We want to focus on seasonality. We want to focus on the fact that it doesn't, this isn't San Diego, it doesn't look the same malt every day, and we want to emphasize here, I should say, that every image that you see is here. There's no stock photos, there's no aspirational imagery of what we would like to be. This is what we are, and that keeps us in touch with the website. The slides you're looking at now are from the sort of launch for this that I presented at the Southern Vermont Economic Development Summit in May of this year, but we want to give people things to think about to improve their commute, whether it's just five minutes down Elm Street for people like myself, or whether it's 20 minutes on 7A. It can be a pleasant experience one way or the other. Because a number of our employers are looking now, not just in northern New England, or people from, you know, Franklin County, Mass. or something like that, but rather to Colorado, Michigan, Pennsylvania, Florida, we need to, in some ways, consider the fact that for some people, this might be their first thought of living in Vermont. So, we also want to lean on the things that make it a special place. We want to lean on the data that people like to call now from third parties about what's the most livable state, what's the most this and the that. And talk about how Vermont is one of the best places for working mothers, for local food, for outdoor recreation, for public health, for public safety, for Main Street entrepreneurship, for startups and small businesses. These things are true, and why should we hide that light under a bushel or somehow say it doesn't relate to us? And by us, I mean the people who live here, some of whom you recognize here, some of whom you know. We have to stay in touch with this website because people come and people go. Like any good soap opera, the cast of characters does not stay static. But this is an opportunity in this page here to give people a chance to talk about why they like it here, why they live in southern Vermont. We can put a face to a name, to a title, and so that people who are visiting this website might see themselves reflected or might see something that makes sense to them. As we've heard, there are so many organizations, or there are so many good initiatives by the organizations in the area that we don't intend for Silvermont to sit in a sandbox or be isolated. There has been a great deal of success, for example, with the State of State initiatives that Matt and his team at the Chamber have pretty capably handled over the last two years or so, as well as in the Wyndham County side overseen by the Southern Vermont Young Professionals Group. And we want to give people some on-ramps to those initiatives and other relocation incentives just to give them some information so that it isn't just Silvermont is on its own, but as a sort of broader region, we're not trying to get in the way of any particular town's marketing initiative, any particular brand, a sub-brand that may be active in the area. What we're really focused on are those industry sectors. What makes our business community, what's knitting that fabric together? To clarify, though, one thing we do not have, we not carry this time, is a job posting or job lists for particular occupations or particular availabilities or postings. That takes us into a different realm where there's, we end up maybe then drowning out some of our smaller partners because some of our larger partners have so many more listings available. But we do want to focus on the sectors that make up southern Vermont's sort of business DNA. And something to highlight there with that business DNA is that top-left square, values at work, that in southern Vermont, there are a rather high concentration of certified B Corpses, of members of the Vermont businesses for social responsibility, of employee-owned businesses, that mission-driven organizations where you don't just work for someone, you work for something. And that resonates, I think, pretty highly with people in the target demographic that we're looking at, and we're hopeful that that comes across on this website as well. It isn't just a website, as you see in front of you and people who are here in person, I invite to look at what maybe have been handed out earlier and is available over by the sign-in sheet. We wanted to put a little bit of our modest budget into coming up with a nice take-home, a nice leave-behind. We want to focus on the sort of artisanal, quality craftsmanship nature of our food and beverage, of our beers and other artisanal activities and outputs. We want to reflect that a little bit in having a brochure that is not destined for the recycling bin, that doesn't look like it's destined for the recycling bin, and doesn't feel like it either as you pick it up and hold it in your hand. We've had some good traction at career fairs, at job fairs, and at sort of college fairs, being the only people there who are talking about a place and not about a position. That sets us apart immediately, and that gives us a chance to talk more about the individual in front of us, unless about ourselves. Not a bad way to go about things. But getting towards the end of my slides here, but something I wanted to point out is here's a number of the organizations that were sort of onboard from the beginning as we solicited cash and in-kind donations. The in-kind donations really took us over $100,000. We had about $12,100 of cash, up to about $102,000 of in-kind combined with cash, and that is what got the feds to say, "All right, that's the buy-in we're looking for. Here's $40,000." And that has meant a lot to us. That's meant that this site, these printings could get off the ground. But what I wanted to point out was some of the variation of what we're looking at as some of these partners, why we have to keep things in a broader work-life balance and not hew to any one particular industry. We have Peckham Industries, a parent company of Daily Precast in Shasbury. Right below them is the New England Center for the Circus Arts. Down here at the bottom, Green River, a software firm outside of Rattleboro that has maybe eight or nine employees, and in the top left, region's largest employer, Southwestern Vermont Healthcare. So, from 12 people to 1,200, from concrete to the circus, these employers are saying that they need ways to bring talent to the area, and we want to give them an ace in the hole when they're working and they're recruiting. Just one example, one or two examples to look at here, for example, at the Daily Precast website on their careers page. I'd like to also highlight that they've put their own videos together to creatively show people what a career at Daily Precast is like, but at the same time, we're also there in that copy about careers with the link to the Silvermont page. The same thing is visible at the Rattleboro Retreats website for their careers page. Something that is especially heartening for us is that this page is no longer about living and working in Rattleboro, it's living and working in southern Vermont, and that's a key reframing that is important to us, and I think is one that only expands our horizons for the places where we live and work. And if you could indulge me for one more minute, this is a brief video that we had put together as sort of the final piece of our multimedia that allows us to cast some of the towns that we know, some of the people that we know, in a really wonderful light. Oh, there's music? There is music. Can that go on? It doesn't have to go on. I can go on.
[inaudible]
Oh, it's okay. So, what we have here is a pretty good example of just who works here and the kinds of the variety of industries that we're able to feature in the region, and it's something that allowed us to, with the last bit of some of that funding that we had in store, show people that balance, that indoor and outdoor recreation and profession, and that all that can take place in the same day. And here's her wife, and here's how she got to work. And why not show people that? Because that's really not how people get to work if they live inside of 495. That's not how you get to work if you live on the Hudson Line. And so, this is something that really we get to see here. A Bennington College student became a fieldwork intern, is now living and working in the area. Look inside the lightning jar, look inside a TPW real estate. It does have it all, and we feel proud to have a campaign that puts that forward for the workforce that is yet to come to the region, but we know well. So, thank you.
That's great, Jonathan. Thank you for narrating, for not singing, giving us any musical background to that. Shannon, do you have other presenters or...
That's it.
Okay, so, you know, I think this is a great presentation. I'm brought back to the phrase that Jonathan used of nesting dolls, you know, that great image of those Russian or Polish, whatever, the doll and the doll and the doll and the doll. And I'd love to invite all of your presenters up to maybe ask some, have our board ask some questions, but maybe as just a sort of starter question, I think this board is, of course, interested, not to make it just about ourselves, but I think this board is interested in the nesting doll that represents the sort of greater Bennington area. And, you know, we certainly have seen the southern Vermont doll, and then within that, the sort of Bennington County doll in the Chamber, and then the very, much smaller doll, the BBC, you know, right in our downtown. And I think the doll we felt like was missing for a while was that medium-small doll, the one that was really about Bennington, and that was the genesis for the $50,000 that we set aside for marketing ourselves. Arguably, our community may have been a little late to the party in promoting ourselves, but I feel like we have made this investment, and I think we're poised as a board to continue to make it if it's still effective. So, I'd love to hear you just give a very brief overview of how you fit in with these other dolls, and whether or not you feel like we're on the right track with what we need for Bennington.
I think we are on the right track, and I was particularly heartened to see the data. I mean, this is what's great about having a firm like 802 right here in Bennington and being able to do this online targeted marketing, is to see that people are really coming to Bennington for our history, our cultural attractions, and our recreation, which is the things that I've, and our downtown events and our, you know, so those are sort of the four legs of the stool that I've talked about from the beginning that we should be promoting. And so, I think that this new site really does that well, and that there's so much more that we can do. So, I think really it can't just be, "Oh, we built it, and now it's done." It's like, oh, there's really, there's a story to tell here.
So, it's more than just the storytelling?
Yeah, I think of it as storytelling, really. I mean, that's what a lot of this, the photography and the blog writing is to me, is really telling that story of Bennington. So, I think we have a good team to do that.
Okay, great. Looks like you have some...
I was just going to add that, and Jonah Spivak would kick me and make sure I said this, that a brand actually takes 10 years to build. And although we think that Bennington's been around for 240 years, you know, the actual Vermont Begins Here takes 10 years. And so, as you're talking about, I just feel like we're getting started to tell the story. You are. You've got many, many years just even to build the cultural following that you're looking for in that brand. It's going to take a long time and a lot of, you know, continuous investment. I wouldn't say a lot of investment, but a continuous investment in telling that story next year and the next year and the next year and the next year.
Great. I'm glad you mentioned Jonah, because Jonah works with Spectrum Design on the Towns website. And so, as we started developing this new website for Vermont Begins Here, I started meeting with Jonah and going, "Hmm, let's look at the Towns website, and what are some things we need to upgrade there?" And he's a really creative, great person to work with, and so we've been adding some changes to the Towns website that I invite everyone to look at as well, as well as thinking about, because he's such an advocate for historical sites and for recreation and is working in both of those areas with Matt and the Chamber on their outdoor recreation initiative, we're also looking at, you know, how to work on that together and how to do more that's tying our downtown to our recreation sites, you know, and that people are thinking of them together. So, it's all really interrelated, and I think that's what's been fun for me, because when I first took the job, I thought, "Is marketing really community development?" But it has been a consensus-building process to think about what are our main assets and how are we strengthening them through this, and I think it has been a real community-building effort.
That's great. That's a great response. Thanks. So, I'd love to take questions from the board. Does anyone particularly want to start? Go ahead, Jean.
I'm assuming that, especially the Chamber and probably Jonathan, are you doing these presentations regionally, like going to Wilmington, going to Manchester? And I'm curious what your feedback is when you're other places other than Bennington.
No, you're the only one that have asked for this, but we just got out of a board retreat last week, and I think we're at a certain point, we had a 2020 vision. Well, we're getting to 2020, so we need to create a new vision, and I think part of that is our effort when it comes to marketing and equally our effort when it comes to business development. So, I think in 2020, you will see a rollout of a roadshow that the Chamber does probably throughout its 17 communities, so.
From the Silvermont side, our intended sort of user base has been the businesses in the area, so we have sort of been meeting with them one-on-one, bringing things up to discuss with them. We have not had a Silvermont-specific presentation at any other town meetings or select board meetings. We had our large campaign launch at the summits back in May, and then we presented this to the Regional Planning Commission's Board of Commissioners, but this is our first show of the Towns, what we've been up to. But I think, as Matt said, that is a really sensible and next step for us through 2020.
Great.
Other board members? Go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, I really appreciate all the material. I would have appreciated all of the material about a week ago, actually, because I can't really comment on really any of it, but I am fascinated by the idea of the numbers, the data, as you'd call it, Shannon. My question really has to do with the use of those numbers and the context of those numbers, and so, does the town have goals that they, that you have set for the activity that we've been talking about tonight, specifically yours? And are they measurable in some sense that I would be able to know? And on just a third comment while I remember it, it would be really great if we could get a copy of what you just presented up there. That would be really handy-dandy to have sort of in my pocket of marketing stuff. I would like to be able to peruse it at that point.
Well, as far as goals, I mean, we're really looking at, like I said, you know, the data from, that 802 Marketing is sharing with us as far as how, what is the reach, you know, and who is our target audience? So, that's our main focus right now. Going forward, I mean, I'm not a specialist on this. I'm kind of wondering if I can maybe have Lynn weigh in. She might have some thoughts on longer-term goals as far as the digital marketing piece and data, just because you've done a lot more with it on your, in your own marketing. Any thoughts?
Sure.
I just think she's going to speak better to this than me.
Well, I think a couple of things that, working with 802, we are setting up...
Well, I think a couple of things that, working with 802, we are setting up specific goals. I don't think Shannon brought any of those with her right now. But as far as Instagram, I mean, we have about 720, and we were looking to try to get to about 1,500 by the end of the year, which is very aggressive. As far as the Facebook ads, I think we want to look at those versus our spend on those as far as what the reach on that is. It's a little harder with this kind of a site, because it, by its nature, is a directory site. So when Matt was talking about, the Chamber's done a phenomenal job without having, with having really low bounce rates. This, by its nature, if they go to a restaurant page, we want them to go to Madison's site, or we want them to go to, you know, one of the shops in town. So, but we are looking at what all that traffic is, what the key pages we're hitting, what are our bounce rates versus industry average. And I think as we get further along, we'll be able to show you that versus industry averages. The thing that Matt pointed out, though, that's really key, is even though the Chamber did a refresh two years ago on Bennington.com, 20 years of having Bennington.com out there, luckily, the Chamber doesn't have to spend on Google AdWords. The reason that 802 is pushing money through Google AdWords now and through Facebook Blast now is because we've got to get that foundation. You've got to get that jumpstart on getting traffic to that site, because you're competing against sites who have been out there 10 or 15 years. So I think you'll want to see more numbers next time, but remember, this is very fresh right now.
And I guess what?
I can share with you, for example, you know, really, these ad campaigns have, the online ads have only been going on for about two months. So, but I have an October and November report for 802 that I can share with you, that I sort of summarized in this as far as what some of those numbers were. But that can get at some of that data a little bit more specifically, if you want to look at that.
And I guess, really, here's what I'm looking for. And I'm looking for some way to say to a Bennington taxpayer, this is why we're spending the money here, and this is where we're being successful. It really does, I mean, you know, clicks are great, or whatever we want to call them, on that, but that's a number that doesn't mean much to many folk. It really doesn't mean that much to me. What's the context for those numbers? You know? I think it's great, but that's not what I think our job here is to say, well, gee, I think this is great. That's a really somewhat subjective. I'm looking for some sense that there are goals that we will be able to assess. Have we met them? Do we meet them? Are we spending our money wisely? Are we spending, actually, it's not our money, it's the taxpayers' money? Are we spending that wisely in doing this? That's what I'm interested in, and that's what I would be interested in in the short haul, even here. If you get my, I'm hoping, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be clear, I'm not sure how clear I'm being.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
I would encourage you, Bruce, to bring your good ideas, too, you know, as, in terms of what would you like to, what do you, seems like a difficult thing to measure. I'm not sure it's, I'm not sure how the science works on it, but yes, clicks may be frustrating, but I think one thing we can say is that doing nothing wasn't working very well for us, or doing very little wasn't working very well for us. So, anyway, it's also worth remembering that this investment that we've made really didn't start until July 1st, and, you know, we're really not even six months into it yet. So, a lot of progress for a fairly short period of time, but we will know a lot more after we've lived with this for a year or two.
And when the presentation was initially made, we were told it takes time.
Right, yeah, right. I'm sorry, I jumped in front of you, Jim. Go ahead.
Just to, just hop onto what Bruce has said, you know, as you, most of you know, I sit on the Commerce Committee, and the way that we measure real growth, or if something is succeeding, is meals and rooms, taxes. And that will be a demonstrable way to identify where the growth is. With respect to that, Matt and all of you assembled here, is there any cross-linking? Matt, you said that you've got a million followers through Bennington.com.
Yep.
Are we, are we cross-linking with Vermont Begins Here?
So I would say we're more cross-linking, not so much around there, although there might be links coming off of our website if it's specific. Usually if we're promoting Fall Palooza, we're pointing them to BetterBennington.com and the like. I would say at the first six-month, eight-month juncture, we're more, we purchased a lot of the photography for a lot of the downtown events, Bennington Battle Day, Fall Palooza, a couple others, the Christmas tree lighting. So we've been very, I would say, helpful and encouraging to provide that to the Vermont Begins Here campaign. And right now, I would say more around strategy. So unfortunately, you can't see it in the eight months that we've done, but if I can lend a hand to Lynn, or to Shannon, or even to John, it's been more of, here's what we've been doing here, this may help. I would say the other thing that we've attempted to help with is Instagram and Facebook repost and commenting, which if you know the algorithm behind Instagram, it really is about the likes, the reshares, and the commenting. So if our brand that has 5,000 followers can comment on a brand that has 700 followers, that's very, that's social cachet for them. So I would say it's small right now. We're also trying to do that across the board with Manchester, Dorset, and Powell, so I think we're trying to be respective of all the 17 communities that we have to do this for.
So just to clarify, there really is no cross-linking?
Not cross-linking? I don't think that we have any pages particularly about that. I would say vice versa, they connect with our calendar.
And wouldn't that work vice versa as well?
Well, as Matt was saying, they have shared some of the blog posts, for example, that I was mentioning, that'll come off of the Vermont Begins Here, that are on Facebook or Instagram photos.
Yeah, I think what Jim was talking about is specifically website. And currently, I would say we have two different strategies. My strategy is a regional base, which we produce our own blog posts. We do not reshare other people's blog posts, whether that be Manchester, or that be Dorset, or that be Bennington. So it's a different strategy. I would say these guys have their website that is what is their website, and they have, they pay for their people to write those and take pictures for those. They're happy, they're more than welcome to use our photos. But in terms of re-linking and resharing, not aggressively at this moment, but I'd be happy to entertain that. I mean, we don't want to pay for all the blog posts either on our website.
No, 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 I'm not talking about blog posts, just links, you know, Bennington.com, well, here's Vermont Begins Here on the same page.
You guys do that? Yeah, you do have those.
I think that gets technical, I think that gets technical. I think you've got two websites that we're managing. Bennington.com, which is houses the Bennington Chamber, more or less, site, or we have the ExploreTheShires.com website. Our ExploreTheShires.com website, which isn't the numbers I showed you today, which are pretty, still pretty good, does have Northshire, Southshire. It's, the ExploreTheShires.com page is just a landing page for them to choose if you come there, would you go to Southshire or Northshire? When they go to the Southshire, they go to Vermont Begins Here.
Jonathan, the Silvermont commercial looks great. Glad you didn't sing.
Are you sure?
But where can we find this?
So that is on the Silvermont page. One of the sort of four major categories there is become a Vermonter, visit Silvermont, Silvermont Careers, Silvermont Lifestyle, it's under the Lifestyle page. But that has also been shared on LinkedIn, and we sort of make it available to employers for them to include as well. It's, because we've been sort of, we've done a lot of what you might call soft launch, we haven't really made a big splash. The numbers, our data from Google Analytics reflects that. It really stayed kind of internal among employers. And that's also been part of, you know, our, we haven't really had a roadshow, meeting with towns to discuss it. We really got this underway the start of June, really, and it's, once that was completed, we then began to have, added that to the website, but we haven't had a specific ad campaign around that to this point.
So has it been on television, or are you gonna use it in that respect?
No, it hasn't. It hasn't been on television. When it is, I will not be narrating. My Stentorian Ken Burns management style.
Anyway, just to beat a dead horse, Matt, you know, this would be a great link to share on Bennington.com, don't you think? And you too, Shannon.
Oh, right. It's an integrated strategy that I was unaware of until now.
That's the phrase, right there.
I would say, for the Chamber, you know, we're always balancing two very, very different things, and I've tried to break it apart in the four years that I've been here. A heavy, heavy hand in destination marketing, which traditionally isn't what a Chamber of Commerce is built for. In Vermont, we tend to build our chambers of commerce that way, so they are very much in, supposed to run the brand of either the town or the region. And equally, we want to make sure that our members feel like we're supporting them in business and economic development. And so I would say in the next year or so, you're gonna see the splintering of those two sites. You're gonna have a membership website that is based on business and economic development, which will parlay with Jonathan's efforts, and we've already talked about things like that. We bring a lot of his material to our travel shows and economic shows, so that's, I would say, we're more partnership with the physical collateral as opposed to the video. But eventually, when we splinter those two sites, and we have a purely destination marketing site for the region, and we have a purely business economic development site for the region, we will partner with them, yeah.
One last question. With respect to you, Matt, and Shannon, and the BBC and Silvermont, do you have an idea of the geographic reach? I mean, how far are we, how far are we reaching out to people?
You can speak for you. You can speak for me. We are seeing hits from Japan, California, Florida, some of the states that I mentioned earlier today, out to the DC area, mostly cities, but some small cities in sort of rural hubs like Bennington, which is the encouraging stuff. Sometimes you get a small town, and it turns out that's where an Amazon data center is, so you discount the validity of that. But in other instances, we're getting to those small rural hubs that don't seem so different from ours, and that's of interest to us.
I would say the best thing that's happened over the last 10 or 15 years in marketing is that you can reach anybody. The worst thing that's happened in marketing in the last 10 or 20 years has been that you can reach anybody. You know, I think you don't need to take a $4,000 page ad out in the New York Times to possibly impress 4,000 people to potentially go to this place in Vermont. We have much more targeted tools, but that also takes a lot of smart people at the table, and that costs money. And so, you know, I don't think social media or this new digital marketing is the silver bullet, or it's so much more exciting now than it was before. It's a different vehicle, and we have to be as smart with it as we were when, in the, in times past. So, again, I would encourage that it does require, I was, I was elated to understand that 802 marketing, you know, I think even oftentimes when my brother and I were trying to run this campaign, I mean, we're good at marketing, but we are not great at marketing. We're not, that isn't our profession. So I was happy to understand that professional designers, professional digital marketers, professional social media experts were playing into this brand. It's all that crucial. You are against, even if you look at your neighbors, you're against Rutland, you are against Williamstown, you're against even Manchester, to say, you know, can we afford the best in terms of search engine when they're looking for, you know, weekend getaways in New England? We want Bennington to come up first.
Do you, while you're standing there, Matt, I'm gonna just, you know, we know that Rutland puts about $200,000 a year into this same kind of stuff that we're putting $50,000 a year in. Do you have other examples of other communities around in terms of where we are on the tight-belt department?
Sure. And I think Lynn did a better job at this one than me last year, but even, I think, after Tourism Day, we found that Basin Harbor spends $200,000. That is one, and Jim, you were there, that's one hotel on the harbor. Now, it's a very successful hotel. My understanding is that, you know, Manchester Designer Outlets probably spends about half a million dollars just for their outlets, for people to come in. We've seen those going up Route 7, so that's no surprise to us. You know, I think you can look at your neighbors in Manchester and Williamstown and say they're comparative. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think what's good is that you have a good, you have a good base here. You have people that are interested, and as much as I suggest putting money into these things, what makes it competitive is if you write better content and take better pictures and find better followers. With the efforts with the Chamber and BRCRC, you can win the game, you know? I mean, that's what it is. We're in this competitive game of how do we get people to, whether that be Stowe, or better be Burlington, or Williamstown, or Bennington, and we have to make sure that we come up on top, speaking as a Bennington native, not as a regional Chamber of Commerce.
I'm sorry, Chad and Jeanie, I cut in front of you. Go ahead.
I think Lynn would like to add to it.
I've got the initial for Woodstock, if you want it.
Oh, sure.
We did that research, and their initial launch of Woodstock.
Would you come to the mic, please, Lynn? I'm very sorry.
We did that, that research for Woodstock, and they told us that their initial launch of their website, WoodstockBT.com, was $70,000. And that was just the initial launch, you know, building and launch of that, no advertising behind it, just building it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, thank you very much. I love the idea of nesting dolls, and you, Jonathan, being the largest of the nesting dolls, yes. But I do think, no, I was with love. No, I think it is really a wonderful strategy, and I think this is a very young collaboration, so that in some ways, all four of the partners are looking at what you're, you know, who your target audience is, how you're gonna do it, and then you're getting to the point now where you can really look at how you really connect well. And, you know, I know both Bennington and, and the Bennington Town Site and the BBC are, have links that are, that are moving people on to specific either businesses or to, you know, the larger community or the smaller community. But I, you know, and I think we, I think we need to be a little patient, and I think as we were told initially, it will take several years to really make the really strong foundation that we, that we think we have. So I appreciate all the work you've put into it, and I appreciate that you are all collaborative and are looking at how to build something bigger than each of your single entities.
Well said, Jeanie.
So, you know, so I really, really love that. And then I have something just like, I am so fascinated by the fact that we could have motor coaches coming to Bennington. And so, I don't know, John, I'll start with you, but Shannon, maybe you have stuff to say here as well, but we have some materials about motor coaches coming. So I don't know. John, can you, can you just tell us what the, what the possibilities are? Is motor coach business still a big business?
Sure. Motor coach has been coming to Bennington for about 80 years.
Where? Okay.
I just worked in Bennington, that was my job. So that was 82, that was in 1982. So I've been working with motor coach companies. It's, it's not very expensive to reach out to them, once you start a relationship, and really, all you gotta do is book one or two, and you've made all your money back, and done some. But while I like marketing to motor coach is, they're coming to Vermont. Vermont is the brand that the riders bought into. But when they get to Bennington, and I said this to our board, if Bennington isn't what they're looking for, then they're in the wrong state. And Bennington has everything they're expecting to find in Vermont with the history, the recreation, the shopping, the restaurants, the people, the quaintness. It's everything that they need. So it's kind of an easy sell, sell to motor coach companies. Of course, the Bennington Museum, Hill Dean, Old First Church, they all market to motor coaches, they want them to stop there. The Country Club, it's the place that can feed everybody. So larger venues, and that's why I was running a hotel in the Vermont Inn. We mounted eight buses every single night to keep us going. But downtown, it's easy, because the easy sell is, we have 12 restaurants within five minutes walking, we have shops all over the place. It provides the riders, you know, two hours of free time to stretch their legs. They can hit and pick and choose the museum, or the pottery for some stops. So it's easy to fit us into the group, especially with the work that's being done on Skull Street now. We want to build a very inviting place to disembark and load the buses, have the buses parked, and provide as many amenities and services you can provide, even to the motor coach that even to the motor coach, the driver and the tour guide and the owners, to let them know if you take care of them, then they'll keep booking and coming back.
So the, so the, so presently, do we have motor coaches coming and parking on School Street?
Yeah, I mean, I think if you look on Google Maps right now, when I'm talking to local motor coach companies, just coincidentally, they photographed when a bus must park there. So it's been very easy. So until they re-map the street, I see you see where the motor coaches park, that is the disembarking area. But it's not designated yet. They just finished the sidewalk this past summer.
Oh, okay.
I'll catch you at the end.
Okay. So, no, just somebody in the audience.
They are stopping.
I do think that's really important because I, I mean, I see Keith at the back of the room and I think one of the things he's said many times is that we just need more feet on the street. Like we have lots of things here. And so it just feels like if we can, if we can bring in more groups of individuals who can wander our streets and just really enjoy it, that's going to be.
The difficult part with marketing, Lynn will get this, to motor coach, they don't want to be here during the busy seasons. And they're all looking for half price rooms. They just do it in quantity. Most hotels don't love them. You'd love them all in the off season, but they all want to come in the peak season when you can get rock grade floorier rooms. But they all let them come through Bennington and those are the ones that we'd like to catch at least for a couple hours.
Hold that thought Sam, I'll catch you. Let's just get Chad if you have any comments.
I don't have any questions, comments though. Looking through the websites, as someone who likes to travel, I'll go to Chamber sites or try to find other area sites. And there's nothing more frustrating when a link doesn't work or you see something. And I found out a lot of information from someone who's lived in Bennington majority of their life, just like some of the hiking trails and different things. It's, it's a great website and if you haven't gone and seen it, please go look at it. And I just, I think it's great and I appreciate the collaboration, so thank you.
That's great, thank you Chad. I'm going to ask if there are any comments from the audience. I see Sam had his hand up, if you've got something, come on up to the mic.
Speaking of motor coaches, we do have one every day weekly, Yankee Trunks. We don't have a placard down the street, which I've been asking for. Anybody that stops into Bennington doesn't know when a bus is leaving from Bennington to go to Rent-A-Train Station. That's where you should spend your tax dollars. It's a lane hour away. And the second one is Vermont Connections. So in order to get our coaches, we've got to get into public transportation. We're physically challenged, as you know, in public transportation, rail and bus, focus on it.
Thank you Sam. Other comments Lynn, come on up.
Okay, so I was kind of taken unexpectedly on that last question, but I did want to say one.
It looks healthy.
No, I'm like punched. I did want to say one thing about tech.
Sorry about that Lynn, thank you for bringing good support.
I did want to say something about the effectiveness of the dollars so far. I think that the fact that you stepped up and you put this money out there made other people step up. And so this website, like 802 is a good example. They did that at a deeply discounted rate and that's only the beginning of the story. Their ongoing rate has been half price rate because they're Benettonians and they want Bennington to succeed. And not only that, but when they did the website, they're, I tried to tally the countless hours that they did that they did not bill us for. And the same with Maru, doing a lot of graphic design, which is her profession, photography donations. I mean, there was so much effort that was put into this that was donated time, donated photography, donated money. And when Shannon and I did sit down and do the math on it, it's really tenfold as far as what we've gotten versus the money we spent on the website. And that's why I think it's so critical that we use the balance of this money to drive traffic to this website and really let it get some legs. So I'm really happy to hear you say that this is something that's going to be a, a long-term build. So I believe that by the time we come, you know, when Shannon comes back in a few months, that we'll have, you know, a little stair step up with our traffic and, and the effectiveness of it, so.
And thank you for all you've put into this and Maru and others who, who have put so much into this. Your presentation to us last winter was very compelling and I think we're excited to see it playing out. I'm not sure if I speak for the whole board, but it's a beautiful website and I love that it's always changing and there's always something interesting there. It always feels fresh and feels well-maintained and, and that's great. Because a lot of times that, that isn't true for a community. So it's, it's really nice to have that upfront for Bennington at this point.
Well, thank you.
Other comments from the audience? Okay, well, I am going to say a deep thank you to the people that are doing this work and also took the time to come and talk to us about it tonight. I also would like to thank the people who have listened to this and the people at home who have listened to this. It, it may seem like a lot, but I think it's really important for us. I think this, this select board in particular has really gotten its head wrapped around the importance of making sure that we tell our story in, in the best way possible. And we're very thankful to have all of you people doing that, so. Thank you and have a, have a great year and bring us lots of good news with all of your interesting metrics. So we are going to have to move on to a slightly more mundane topic here, but nevertheless, very important. This is the, the final hearing for Bridge Six on Route Nine East. Stuart, where are we with this at this point?
Well, we carried over from two meetings ago to give folks some opportunity to think about this project and to respond to it. And we're at the point now where perhaps some final comments will be made by the audience and by the board members. But the agency is looking for us to choose an alternative. The one they recommend obviously is a full bridge replacement on alignment with traffic maintained on an off-site detour, approximately a 60-day construction timeframe. If the board in fact agrees with that, then our participation, the local share, will be reduced to half the usual amount or just 5%. And then there is a place for the board to make comments about the project that would be then forwarded to the agency for their consideration when they do the bidding for the ultimate project. So that's where we're at.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we see if we can get through this? And when we do, let's maybe have a motion for the, for the town manager to get this letter out if we can. So are there, at the last meeting, we identified three things that were really important to this board. Let's, let's take it in pieces. First of all, let's, let's start with, are we in favor of the full bridge replacement? This is the, this is the recommendation of the town staff and this is also the recommendation of the state. It also seems to be the lower cost share for the more durable bridge. In other words, there are cheaper ways of doing this, but they have much shorter lifespans, 30 years or something like that, as opposed to 100 years. So, so without wanting to lead the witness here, I would say I, I'm, I'm feel pretty in favor of this full bridge replacement. Do others have different opinions?
No, I agree.
No, okay. So if we're, if we're moving towards full bridge replacement, at the last meeting, there were three items that were brought up Stuart. Would you like to review those, what the, what, what we heard from public comment?
Yes, the first concern is that some folks would like the project to go forward in May and June, which may be difficult according to some of the fisheries folks. But that would be a, a thing, I think, that, that the people who are most impacted by this project would like to see. So it's, it's in and over before the summer season really is upon us. The second was to limit the construction to six 12-hour days. The state indicated that the contract may allow for 24-hour a day working, but there was concern by some of the businesses and certainly with the Safford Manor folks that six 12-hour days should be sufficient with no Sunday work.
And did that, there was no penalty for that from the state, right?
No, no. It just, you have to understand though, that if the contractor does for whatever reason, find himself or herself getting behind, they would have the opportunity to use a 24-hour schedule.
Okay.
What's the 12 hours, eight to eight, seven to seven?
Generally, these projects are, I think are seven to seven.
Okay, and the third one?
The, the no Sunday, six 12-hour days, no Sunday, no 24-hour. It's kind of a combination.
Okay. So are there other concerns that the board would like to put forward to the state at this point? And, and while you're thinking about that, I'm, I'm going to say, although I'm very much an aquatic and water person, I do feel like the May-June start, the early start would be worth really pushing for, especially since the bridge replacement is necessary but is not imminent. In other words, it's, if, if we have some room to really push hard for an early spring replacement. And I, I think if we could write the letter in such a way that we, we, we stress that it was really important to our downtown economic development community, that we have a, a spring start, we would be patient about which spring, but we'd like to work with them on that if possible.
What's the concern about the spring though, with more fisheries?
Was fisheries and, and if we can't, you know, we, we do have to take care of our fisheries too. So if we simply can't address those concerns, then we won't be able to. But ask them to make every effort to try to do a good, a good project and do it in the spring. Other, other concerns Chad?
And I don't know if the state has a program for this. Do they do any financial considerations if a business is showing a loss of revenue with a little compensate? I'm not, I'm not even thinking like one or 2%. If they could significantly show a 10% decrease in revenue year after year or yearly average, I feel that, I just feel for the businesses if their revenue were to drop, it could really cripple them and potentially put them out of business.
The state does not.
They do not.
Offer that consideration.
Can I, so is there, I mean, a, a very real problem is going to be that you cannot get from the inn to the restaurant. Is there any way that the business, the businesses concerned could get some assistance? And they're going to need to build a bridge or a footpath. I mean, they literally will not be able to get from one of their businesses to the other.
And they run packages, I believe, right? Could be for that stay and don't they run between the two?
Yeah, so they, yes, so they do run between the two. And literally, you'd have to swim across the creek to do that. Is there any, is there anything that the state can offer to help offset those costs?
I would guess that it was because it was not part of any of the presentations that they had, that they would, they haven't even considered that.
Is it something that?
I mean, if you want to add it as to one of the comments, that, that the state might try to find a way to link the inn and the restaurant.
Please.
We can include it in our comments.
Thank you.
I would think that'd be absolutely essential to do that.
Wooden footbridge.
It would be, it would be great if it didn't trigger the kind of.
Yeah.
Pain and agony we're feeling on the bridge for the Ninja Trail, which is, you know, getting hung up in the red tape of the state. So if we.
Temporary.
Something similar.
If we could, if we could ask the Agency of Transportation to use their significant muscle to come up with some sort of temporary thing, that might be, that might be a good, good thought.
So this will be, it'll be a full closure, detour, no traffic. And John's preference was get in, get out, get it done.
That's what he said.
That's what he said.
Get in, get out, yeah.
Right, right.
It's not just about John, it's about everybody else.
I know, I know.
We did ask John, we put him on the spot and we asked him in some detail, what he thought would be best for not just him, but for other business owners. And that was his response.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We know we have to have this work done. We can either drag it out and have it be long and painful or we can get it over with quickly. And, and his advice was get it over with quickly and as early in the season as possible.
Do we have any say regarding the, the detour, the nature of the detour? Or which vehicles are detoured in which way?
Well, this, after the first meeting, the state did come back and indicate that they will look to two in-town detours for smaller vehicles. And that is Coolidge Avenue and Gage Street. And they're going to try to remove all truck traffic out onto 279.
I would encourage that.
Jim, anything from you? No? You're kind of in the get it done camp, aren't you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Quit messing around and get it done. Okay. Any comments from the audience? Come on up.
I'm very familiar with Bridge Number Six. As you know, there's two locations that construction equipment, probably staging supplies. One is the old Stewart's and naturally the parking lot next to the Stratford, or to the inn. Are you permitting for contractors to utilize those spaces or have, you haven't thought about that yet? If you're going to be closing this street down?
That would be up to the owners of the businesses as to whether or not they allow staging of equipment there. Not up to the town.
How does the board feel about this?
Think about this, we're not going to shoot from the hip.
Right.
But we'll work with the state on the best plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
When's the, I'm sorry, when's the targeted date?
Oh, it's a couple years at least.
Like 23, 24?
20, 23.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Good evening. Please, please let us know your name.
My name's Keith Martin.
Thank you Keith.
I'm the owner of the Buck Stop Convenience Store as well as the Associated Car Wash out back. And I'm here in support of, I want, I'd like to see the full bridge replacement, but alternative 3B, only because our type of business is not only dependent on convenience, but also through traffic. And to detour pretty much all the traffic off of a major highway, let alone Main Street, away from our businesses is going to be economically, it's going to hurt. I'm familiar with the economic impact of the bridge closing on Benmont Avenue, which isn't even a major highway, although it does have quite a bit of traffic. And, you know, we saw impacts of 30, 35% reduction with the phased type of traffic. And I think if I had to pick one of the two, I'd rather go for the incremental time lag. I think it was three months maybe, from six to nine months total. If we did the phase, I think it would be well worth going that route rather than stopping all that traffic or detoring it before it gets to those businesses.
What, what would be your preferred time of year to see this happen?
As early as possible, in the spring. Yeah, the May, the May-June. April, May, if water prevent, permitted.
Well, yours is a critical business. Go there at least twice a week. But I do think that there's quite a, quite a strong sentiment to try to get this done as quickly as possible. Not to drag it out any longer than we have to in terms of getting people through and into downtown.
And one of the other detriments to Keith's proposal is the local share goes from 5% to 10%. Our cost doubles.
Well, yeah, at some level, I think that maybe isn't, yeah. You're just giving us your opinion, I appreciate that. We care about your business.
It's quite a bit more money, but.
Yeah.
I can't imagine what it's going to do to us if you detour all that traffic away from us. You know, if you really want to get, get a car wash, at that particular car wash, you'll probably find your way there. Or if you really want to buy gas at the mobile station, you'll figure out a way to do that. But that's not the majority of our businesses. Convenience, if you're driving by and it's easy, then you go in and.
Yeah, we may have competing priorities here, but go ahead Chad.
I've seen this on other detours, but when, when they come off the detour, could we advertise the businesses that?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
You know, the, the car wash, the, the gas station, just so the people that got detoured around, if it's closed, to come back that way?
Yeah, I would like to actually see some sort of creative concerted effort for the community to support the businesses that are going to be impacted the most. You know, I'll drive a couple blocks out of my way to support you. I'll, I'll make my way to Miller's Toll. So I don't, I think it could be something that could actually unite us and support our local business owners. I don't, I don't, it's sort of what you're piggybacking on what you just said.
We might be able to induce or persuade the state to participate in that in some way.
Yeah, I was, I thought that initially, like, oh, is there some sort of financial bucket to help businesses that are impacted more? But there aren't, yeah, I don't know.
So they mentioned a six-month duration, you know, on the 60-day full closure. I'm wondering what they're doing for those other four months. Six, you know, two months, the road's closed completely, but I'm wondering what's happening with the other four months. completely, but I'm wondering what's happening with the other four months.
The way they described it to us was down to one lane, didn't they?
Excuse me?
So, no?
No, they were doing
On the, on the, on that side.
Oh, am I getting the scenarios mixed up? Yeah, okay.
And didn't, didn't I ask the question, what's the data show? Is it better for businesses to just get in, get out, rather than dragging it out? And I think the answer was businesses, the impact is less if it's shortened, but, you know, the traffic's completely stopped. I believe that was the answer.
It was, it was.
Yeah, yeah. So I, it makes no, doesn't really make sense to me, but
I think the reason was that you didn't, there was, you didn't, didn't completely make a new pattern, that if you, if you have trouble going to, well, the Benmont is sort of the exact, is that scenario, right? If you don't go there for a year, then you find other places to go. So if it's a shorter duration, it's a pain.
You fall back to your same habits.
And you may go, you may make the detour for a shorter period of time, but for a long period of time, you're not going.
I don't know if that makes you feel better, but
I don't know if it helps, yeah.
No, I'm just familiar with what happened on Benmont Avenue. And I was very worried about that, too, but somehow we made it through it. And that was phased for a couple of years.
Eighteen months.
A couple of building years.
Eighteen months.
And we made it through that, and
Yeah, I mean, maybe we should do a little bit more investigating. I mean, I tend to side with people who study this. This is what they do for a living, and they, they know. I don't know, but people do. People do this, this kind of stuff. Maybe, maybe that would help you.
If the board would like more time to think about it, we could move in that direction. I, you know, notwithstanding your concerns, I am still in the camp that I would like to see this done and over with as quickly as possible. And the idea of a tangle on Route Nine for six months feels to me like incredible pain and agony for our entire downtown. But if the board would like more time to think about it, Stuart, what's the urgency of getting this letter out? Could we, could we take a vote at our next meeting?
Sure could.
I'm wondering if the, I mean, what they told us was the longer we waited to take the vote, the longer they'll take to actually do the bridge repair. But I wonder if, if the data show that, that getting, closing down and getting it done and over as quickly as possible is the best route to go, I'm wondering if what we need is more time to think about, how are we going to really work with the impacted businesses?
I'm going to get that data, because every business is different.
Yeah.
I think you kind of have to break it off, just I
Yeah, I mean, that's not what I meant. I meant that it feels like it's better to spend the time. I mean, I think that my mind isn't going to be changed, because it feels like they made a very strong case for the shorter duration made the most sense. But I do think that thinking about how we can mitigate the, the damage that will be done for people who cannot easily get to your business and other businesses is worth our thinking about. What can we do that actually, you know, involves the community to say, here, here are affected businesses, and how can we make sure that, to the extent possible, you're not, you know, you're visible and, and people are taking advantage of your services?
I would agree with that. I think, I don't know that my mind will be changed about the duration, but I think mitigation is really a critical issue, particularly for those who are on the in-board side of the detour.
Right.
In both cases. So I, I would want us to be putting resources, thought process, the community resources there to mitigate the, the harm for that shorter period of time. That's
Well, if I, if I may, Stuart, you know, they did say to us that we, the sooner we get the letter out, the sooner they can kind of get cracking on this. But our next meeting is really not that far from now. You know, we have one of the two businesses that would arguably be most affected by this coming up in front of us. It feels to me like it would be good, it would be considerate practice to not vote tonight, to think about it as individuals, and talk to whoever we want to, and then take a vote on it at our, at our next meeting. And I'm not sure that, I'm not sure we will change our mind, but at least what we can say is that we'll take some time to think about what you said, and we'll see if we can, we'll take it up for a vote. With the permission of this board, we can take it up for a vote in our next meeting. Does that sound reasonable? Or would people like to push this through tonight?
Can, can we get that question answered again by whoever answered it the first time? Was it, was it the people from
Sure, we can ask them for some more information. We could ask the town manager to have them send a little bit more information, which we can, we can receive but not comment on because of the open meeting law. And, and we could each think about that a little bit more, if you like.
I would appreciate that.
There is the possibility, there is the possibility that the staging area would be the parking lot directly across from the Buck Stop, and he's got a captive audience for lunches throughout this sixty days.
And so the, would you be able to turn, so where will it be closed? Where will the traffic stop? Will it, will you be able to make the turn?
Beach Street. Will you be able to get up Beach?
That'll be Bradford, wouldn't it?
No, I meant, I meant South.
No, I, I, I don't think we have that information specifically. I think we can, we can argue that, that Beach Street should remain open to traffic.
Okay.
Because that, that, that would be incredibly bad if they were to block that as well.
Yes.
That, that changes the whole detour flow.
So it would be nice, maybe that's information that we could have before next meeting as well, because that makes a huge difference.
Sure.
With, yeah.
Yeah.
And Morgan, like, is Morgan, what's the deal with
Yeah, I think the plan was to, really to close off simply the bridge.
Okay.
That's what I think.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll confirm.
So that's between, like, Morgan and
Let's just confirm that, and then
Because that does make a difference.
Stafford and Bradford would be the
Okay. So do you feel like we've heard your concerns here tonight?
Yes, yeah, thank you. Your meetings are every two weeks.
Our next meeting will be December ninth.
Was this discussed two weeks ago?
It was actually two, two meetings ago.
The last meeting I
Two meetings.
Right, so I didn't miss a meeting.
Yeah, no.
I didn't think so. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will not be taking action on the final hearing. Bridge Six on Route Nine-Nine East tonight, but we will be putting it on the agenda for December ninth. We're now moving into a manager's report. Stuart, what have you got for us tonight?
Well, let's see. I have two action items for you tonight. The first is the request to support the Mount Anthony Sophomore Career Summit on April eighth in 2020. You had asked us to budget monies for that particular event, and those funds are being carried in the Partnership Activities Account in the Community Development Department. So I'm asking for you, by motion, to agree to donate $500 for that particular event.
As a, as a very often participant in those sophomore summits, I'd be happy to make that motion.
Okay.
Oh, I'd love to second it.
I thought you might.
We have a motion on the table, and it's been seconded. Any conversation, any discussion on that? I think it's a great, having participated in
It's a great experience, I think.
Great for youth, and a, and a great tie to workforce development, so
The location this year, Bennington College.
Bennington College.
College again, yay!
Yeah, I'm very glad that's happening. Good, good for workforce. Okay, so I'm going to call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, go ahead. That, Stuart, what's next?
Great. Under our traffic control ordinance, the manager has the authority, and it says as voted by the select board, to place and maintain such traffic control signs, signals and devices at such locations as he and I would add she deems necessary to regulate guide or warn traffic. We've had a number of incidences over the years that have just been brought to my attention by the recent snowstorm, where people coming down Jefferson Heights, there is a stop sign there, but not on Weeks. And our, our highway trucks have actually slid into the intersection there. It is incredibly steep incline. So I, I am proposing to place and indicate that as a four-way stop, so that we have to bring traffic to a stop on, on Week Street. And I would like your support via motion to do that.
I would totally move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any conversation about this true hazard, as, as your writing says? Everyone know where it is? Everyone understand where it is? It is steep.
Yeah.
It does seem dangerous. I wouldn't want to drive a highway truck down there.
I never go that way when it's snowy.
So, so we do a four-way stop, and then if it, if it doesn't work, we try something else, but let's see if we can save a life there?
Yeah, and, and generally, when we do a new four-way stop, we'll, we'll have flashing lights
Good idea.
at the intersection, so that people know that there's something going on.
Okay. Now, you don't need a motion on that, Stuart?
I do, I would like a motion.
Would you like a motion?
Just that the board supports my decision.
I'm sorry, we have a motion.
Sitting like
Yep.
Just kidding.
Okay, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much for that recommendation, Stuart.
All right, and as someone questioned earlier, or mentioned earlier, the idea of the liquid petroleum tank storage, I did draft a letter and send it on to our congressional delegation in Washington, asking them to clarify at a minimum what the word transit means. Federal regulation does allow Vermont Railway to carry a number of potentially dangerous materials in transit. And unfortunately, they are using without, seemingly without caring, although they claim that these, these tanks, tankers are very, very safe, these have become actually storage warehouses for liquefied petroleum, and they are within 50 feet of a number of homes. It's, there has to be other places that these things can be stored. And so that's what I'm asking the delegation to do, based on your direction. We, we'd like to clarify or amend federal regulations to prohibit this kind of storage in very close proximity to residential neighborhoods.
I think probably if you're living next to it, this feels like a, a sort of not, not very
Comforting?
Not very bold move, but it, it does feel like until we establish what that transit means, we can't really do anything. Right, until they, they have
And it is, it is federal regulation.
It is.
And looking back through the file, the last time we wrote to Governor Scott, he actually came back and told us that these are very safe, and that the state is very much in favor of allowing this to happen, because it provides fuel, necessary fuel for operations that might not be available otherwise.
All right, well, I'm certainly in favor of you writing that letter.
It has gone.
So I'm glad that, I'm glad that that's underway.
And in the essence of time, I just want to mention that the IACP group has moved on. They've completed all of their in-town visits. I understand their email is still open and available to people, and they may still be corresponding. The survey itself closed on November 16th. So that survey is done, and we, I'm told just, have been trying to send on the final information that we have gathered as part of their data gathering. So we, we have a thumb drive that's, that's going to get to them. I think it might even been picked up today. So we will have completed our end of all of their requests, and we expect to hear from them sometime in late December.
Okay.
And I'll stop there.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, ongoing SPFOA in Morgan Springs, opioid and wastewater, so. Yes, Keith?
I was just curious if you had a sense of how the collection of property taxes went this year?
Uh, right off the top of my head, it went about normal. I think we have a first week delinquency of around 1.2 million, which is pretty standard. It may even be a lower percentage, given that the grant list has, has grown slightly over the years. So we generally see a relatively high number in November, December, and then it slowly drops down again, back into what we consider to be the normal range. So I think collections went fairly well this year.
Thanks. All right, thank you. Well, so we, we have a brief agenda-setting meeting. I would like to ask this board if we could have a executive session to finish our ongoing manager's review on Monday, December 2nd at 6:00 PM. How many people could attend that?
What's the date again?
It's Monday, December 2nd at 6:00 PM.
No, no, I've got to be in monthly for the seventh, so I'll be leaving.
This is on this, on December 2nd?
This is on Monday, this is Monday.
Second, yeah, I'm sorry.
I thought you said six.
I may have. December 2nd, six months, okay. So Stuart, can we schedule that, please? Executive session for that. On the 9th, we, we had talked about the possibility of having a comprehensive conversation about kind of our recreational assets and where we're going with those. But I think the town's going to spend a little more time thinking about that, and we will be talking about that in early January.
Okay.
Which I think will be a, a better, a better time for that. The only other people who have been in contact with me about getting on the, on the agenda for the 9th is the Seven of Vermont CUD effort. Did they contact you, Stuart, at all?
I have not heard from them.
No, for high-speed internet. This is, this is a, a group that's trying to pull a CUD together for Bennington County to bring wire fiber to all of Bennington County. And they seem to feel it needs to go on the ballot, and they want it to potentially be on that, on that meeting date. So I'll, I'll make sure that Eric Hatch is in touch with you about that. The, we don't have anything else on, on the schedule at this point for the 9th, unless you have something up your sleeve, Stuart. But I would remind board members that we, that we plan to cancel the 23rd, and instead have a very brief meeting the week before, just to do warrants.
Well, we now have pushed the Bridge Six decision to the 9th.
That's right. That's right. We do have Bridge Six on the 9th, yeah. But, but we are going to hold, is it the 16th? Is that, yes, we're going to hold the 16th just for warrants and, and any necessary action at that point. And then, we're going to get puckered up for budget season, when we have a lot of Saturday meetings and, and do a lot of budget work. So that, get, get ready for some weekends in January. But other than that, I think that's what we have for now. So, brings us to, oh, there's one other, I guess, issue is that, is that there, there's a, I did speak to Howard Cohen about the scheduling of a firehouse visit at some point, which I know had meant a lot to several people. So does this board have any particular desires about that? My, my thought would be we, we try to come in at 5:15 or something like that, and have a half an hour visit before a regularly scheduled meeting. Would that
Should we do it the 16th? We're going to be here briefly. I mean, it would add a little bit of time, but
Or the 9th? Is the 9th too soon?
I don't know, that's up to them.
I doubt the 9th is too soon. I would rather not do it on the 16th, because I feel like I'm
It's a short
I'm trying to make that a short meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
The 9th makes as much sense, doesn't it?
Okay. Stuart, would you like me to reach out to the fire department? Would you like to do that, or how would you?
I'll, I'll take care of that.
Okay, great.
Is it just a tour, or did they want to make some sort of a presentation as well?
No, no, no pitch, no, no, nothing in particular.
Just a tour.
It's just a tour of this fire facility.
Nice.
And, you know, we come here a couple times a month, and we only go to this room. And I think there's an interest in having us see the breadth and depth of what they do here.
Okay.
So
We want to, I mean, the 9th works, but would they want to do it when they do their budget presentation in January, to save them? I don't know, that's just a thought.
That's a good point.
I mean, is there a rush to get the tour?
There's no rush.
Just trying to save them a day, too, because they're going to be here for the budget presentation.
We could do that. How would that work, Stuart, with that?
Usually, we pair the police and fire departments
Sure.
together, so the fire department can lead off. We could start the meeting slightly early, get the tour in.
Mm-hmm.
And then, sit down and enjoy coffee and
Mm-hmm.
Are they
And our schedule is to go visit the police at some point, too.
Are they, is there a report on the 4th?
More than likely, we would take them first.
Nothing's called.
Yeah.
So that would be one of the Saturdays, is that
Yeah, probably January 4th would be the first Saturday. We'd hit police, police and fire, and, and see what else we can get in, in that timeframe.
Right.
Okay, I like that suggestion. Thanks. Okay, I like that suggestion, thanks, Chad, that's good. All right, take, scratch it for the ninth then. Okay, other business. Chad, what have you got tonight, anything?
I do not have anything tonight.
Jeanie?
Just come out and bang on tin cans tomorrow, from six to eight, and then show up on December fourth to be part of the red wagon parade down to the, the tree lighting, so, and that'll be at four-thirty.
All right, Jim?
Just a couple of things. Legislatively, there's talk of, because of the declining membership in local fire departments and emergency services, one plan is to forgive property taxes for people who are firefighters and emergency medical services. I don't think that's a very good idea. Number one, we're losing, we would lose huge amount of property tax dollars, and how would we pay for those, those services and the, the equipment? Alternatively, we've seen through our own fire department, a decrease in the number of firefighters that we have, and one, I think, one of the reasons that we can reliably point to is that we're no longer able to serve alcohol here at the firehouse. Like it or don't, it's a social lubricant, and we built this firehouse with this beautiful lounge area with a bar to hold all sorts of different social functions, and I think we ought to contemplate whether or not we should restore our liquor license here in an effort to make it a more socially active place, not just for the firefighters, but for the community in general. So anyway, I'd like us to think about that. Finally, tomorrow would have been the one-hundredth birthday of my dad, and wishing him happy birthday, Pop.
I'm gonna say just a word of thank you about empty bowls, is that gonna take your...
No.
Oh, good.
No.
I was, I'd like, just like to thank the community, there were almost a thousand, not quite a thousand people there that night. And to all the individuals and the businesses who donated both bread and soup, and to the folks who made pots, they made slightly over bowls, they made slightly over a thousand bowls, and so they did have a few left over, but with the nine hundred and fifty guests or thereabouts. It, to me was, I was out greeting the line for about an hour. It's one of those remarkable times when Bennington comes together in a lot of ways, and all kinds of different folk are there, and I, to me, it was a great spirit. The only other thing I handed out for you, something that Jim Martinez had handed to me this afternoon, which is about the chamber mixer at the tri, tri-state area Federal Credit Union on the twelfth of December. If you have never been in that building, I encourage you to go. It's just the remark, it is remarkably beautiful work inside, and I'm always amazed at the kind of stuff they do, and anyway, it's a great addition to the town, so that's, that's all I got.
The only thing I have, if you don't want to hammer nails through tin cans, which sounds like a ton of fun, there's also the pop-up choir tomorrow at seven o'clock at Old Castle, if you wanna sing instead of make.
No, you can pound for an hour.
An hour. I know, I, I didn't know if it was enough time to go
Oh, sure.
Okay, so go from six to seven, and then go sing. We're gonna sing Sweet Caroline.
There you go.
All right.
Yeah.
Which is such a cool idea.
It is, it's ten dollars, you go in, you sing with no experience, you sing for two hours, you perform in front of your family, and you go home. And it's all, it's a fundraiser for the roof that is necessary to be placed.
Well, thank you, friends, and thank you
Oh, and happy Thanksgiving!
Happy Thanksgiving, that's right, don't forget, happy Thanksgiving, and, and... So we will, unfortunately, have to go into an executive session on a contract matter, so I would like a motion to go into executive session on a contract matter, please?
I would move that, so long as we know that we're not coming out and making any kind of act, taking any kind of action.
Okay, any seconds?
Second.
Thank you, Jeanie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, two-minute break, and then into executive session.